I will go ahead and call to order a town of quarter mid area town council meeting for March 1st, 2022. And with that Rebecca, can we get a roll call please?
Councilmember Beckman.
Here.
Councilmember Wangin.
Here.
Councilmember Rivasio.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lee.
Here.
Mayor Casissa.
Here. If we can all salute the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks. And with this, I'll go ahead and open up the meeting for public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to speak on any topic they like to that is not on our agenda. Your time is limited at three minutes and Rebecca will put up the timer and I see one hand raised. There's no name. It just looks like it is a phone number that ends with 7148.
Okay, I'm going to unmute. I'm still waiting for the timer to enter the meeting. So as soon as I'm able to bring the timer in, you will see that. I'm unmuting the phone number now. Are you able to speak? Unmute yourself.
If you're calling in, you have your hand raised, you can go ahead and speak. You may just have to unmute, please. And again, if we don't have a name.
I have.
Okay, we can hear you now.
That's fine. Is Todd Cusimano there?
Yes, he is.
Todd Gloria Groso. I want you to leave me alone. Do you understand that, Todd? I'm waiting for a response.
Unfortunately, under public comment, we don't provide responses either from council members or staff members.
Okay, well, I understand that he, listen, I know that he has stolen money out of my swab checking account. I know that he's used my credit card to fly to Mallorca in 2014. I believe he's told the county recorder not to allow me to get my ex-husband's death certificate. I want this to stop. I want it to stop, Todd. And if it doesn't, I've talked to the US Marshals. I know you've been paying them off so that you don't go to jail. They're getting sued. You're going to go to jail. I know you were there when I was beaten half to death on 10-10-10 and I want it to stop. That's all I have to say to him. I think, I think it's a joke that he works for you as a city manager. I know he was fired from his job as the police chief in federal court in 2014. He doesn't deserve to be paid more than any other city manager out there in Marin County. Thank you very much. I'm not going to waste anybody else's time. I want you to stop, Todd. I'm making it very clear to you. I want it to stop.
Thank you very much. It looks like she hung up. So that Rebecca, do we have any public comments via email?
No, Mayor Casissa, we did not receive any emailed public comments for open time.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see any more hands raised. So at this time I go ahead and close public comment. We have one presentation tonight. It is from Dr. Bert Gilth, God, I had it down before Girthman and I apologize if I miss, misspelled your name. We're, I was going back and forth between Rebecca and Charles. He is the superintendent for the Larkspur Quarter Madera School District. Correct me if I'm wrong. You've been with us since, or the school district since July 2017. So you're coming up on your five-year anniversary. Before that, you were the assistant superintendent of education services for Manhattan Beach School District down in Southern California. You have a doctorate from USC and you have two hall school, two hall middle schools. If I'm wrong, let me know if you want to add, feel free to before your presentation.
No, that is perfect. Thank you so much, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Right. Fantastic. So I'm going to see, I should be a little excellent. I can do my screen share here. So I'm going to do that in just a moment, but just want to give great appreciation to everyone here this evening for allowing me to share some updates from Larkspur Quarter Madera School District. We're really proud of the work going on here in the school district and going to different stakeholder groups and giving them an update. You know, one of the things that has been a challenge with the pandemic, right, is running into different people and different spots before meetings, after meetings, catching up and being able to share the good things going on. And so I'm going around town and meeting with different stakeholder groups just to give an update and re-spark those collaborative relationships. Todd and I actually get a, get a chance to catch up every once in a while and work on some projects together and greatly appreciate all of his partnership with, with LCMSD. So I'm going to do a quick screen share here. And so let me hit present. Okay, so one of the things that we're really focused on here in LCMSD is every student, every day. We want every student to be challenged, known, respected, and supported in our schools. And this, this kind of mantra came out during the pandemic, but it really embodies a lot of our strategic priorities around personalized learning equity and reaching again, every single student. So who are, who is LCMSD? We have three schools. We have Cove, Neil Cummins, Hall Middle. We have roughly 1350 students, 96 certificated teachers, and 47 classified staff. Here's our board of trustees, many names that I'm sure you are familiar with. We have Jill Sellers, who is stepping down. She's been a tremendous president. She's been on the board for six years and I can't thank her enough for her service as well as the other trustees. This is our leadership team. So we're a small but mighty team. We work exceptionally well together and, and really enjoy this work. Despite, you know, how challenging COVID has been, it's been a way for us as a team to really collaborate and get really creative in how we do things. These are the strategic priorities. You might have participated in this back in 2017, but these were developed then and serve as a roadmap or a lens for which, for how we wait, how we make decisions. We do surveys on these to see if they're still relevant for our community and also for our teachers and staff. And well over 90% say this is definitely the direction they want the district going. So one of my purposes tonight is to extend some gratitude to you, extend gratitude to our community. And, and I want to start first with this photo here. If you take a look, you know, this is early on the pandemic. This is Hall Middle School. This is one of our teachers, Ms. Irving. You see, we have the Plexiglas. The kids are six feet apart. They have their masks on. This is an early pandemic photo, but the most important thing in this photo to pay attention to is that our kids were in-person learning. We led the charge here in Marin County. We led the charge and served as a model and exemplar. We are cited in national research briefs, statewide research briefs, received a lot of, a lot of positive press and also just overall acknowledgement for getting kids back to school on October 5th of 2020. And we started K through A, five days a week. So our students received 140 days out of 180 days of in-person school. We have high vaccination rates across our staff and we've hosted visitors not only locally, but throughout the state in order to share, how do we do it? How do we open up our schools? And so some of the secrets to our success were a few different things. One was leading with science, leading with equity, and leading as a team, trusting our public health officers and the information that was coming. Another secret to our, our success was our community support and our community coming together. And I say our entire learning community because that consists of our teachers, of our staff, of our principals, of our leadership, of our board, of our community members, of our parents, of our students. Everyone really came together. And I think we also examples throughout the pandemic where communities were working against each other, but not here in Larkspur and Quarter Madera. We were working together as a team and we were working together in the best interest of our kids. And I just can't thank you enough on behalf of the school district for that support. The other things that are really exciting about our schools that are going on is we have some award-winning schools and you might have recently seen if you drive, driven past Hall Middle School. Hall is now a national distinguished school. So every year California gets to put up two schools in the entire state to represent our state as national distinguished schools and Hall Middle School was a school chosen this year. So really excited about that, the growth that Hall has made and just so proud of the staff and teachers there. Cove School and Neil Cummins also award-winning schools. So all these wonderful things going on in our district is because of our community support. That's what it is. We, we work together as a team, not only in terms of doing the heavy lift to get kids back in school. We had parents, community members peeling Plexiglas, doing all kinds of things to get kids back in class, but also with resources to support us. You could see here, this is, this is a quick graph of our funding model. If you look at the colored pie on the left-hand side or the multicolored pie there, we have, it represents the different monies coming in. So we have our LCFF funds, which are from our state. We have some other state funds, which is a flat grant that we receive, and then those very small federal funds. But if you notice the green part of the pie, that is a significant portion, that's roughly 30%, that's community funding. That's the parcel tax. That's our spark funding. That's the lease revenue that we generate from leasing out Marin Primary. It is our lifeline. That equates to roughly 28 teachers in our district. And if, when we did that, we are LCMSD, we have roughly 96 to 98 teachers total. So imagine taking a little bit more than, well, almost a third of our teachers are funded through that particular source. And so it's a, it's a big deal. We have, if you followed us, this is kind of that local breakdown where you can see the parcel tax at 3.52 and Spark Foundation is 1.25. It's a significant portion of our budget. And so what you may have been reading lately, maybe you got the mailer that we sent out. We've been talking about this in the boardroom since October. But we have our parcel tax that is expiring June 30th, 2024. This is what's called a multi-year projection. We do, which I'm sure you're, council members are familiar with. But we, we do this for every budget cycle. We do this for first and second interim as well. But we basically have to show the state that we are fiscally solvent and we can, we can pay our bills, that we have programs and staff in place and, and can stay afloat. And you can see here, if we look at that 24, 25, when the parcel tax expires, we basically drop off a cliff. This means here you got this negative 8% reserve, which means that we would then, if something doesn't change, we would then be taken over by the state. What the state would do is they would dramatically change our schools. We wouldn't have things that we know and love like counselors, art programs, music programs, PE teachers at the middle, at the elementary school. We wouldn't have the robust elective program at Hall. We'd have much larger class sizes and the list goes on and on. And so we're here today to one, say that we really, really appreciate all the community support to get our kids back in school. But also the parcel tax was a huge piece in that. And on this Thursday, our board will be voting on a resolution to put a parcel tax on the June ballot. And so if, if you know, there's any interest there, that's a public board meeting. We've had public participate in previous board meetings in regards to that, but wanted to share how important that was. And you can see here, this is just some, what, some of what that community funding supports, which I rattled off just a minute ago, but it really, it's a game changer for us. It makes us, I mean, Marin County is known for our schools. Larkspur Quarter Madera is, it's one of the primary features, right, of our community, a pride, a pride in our community. I often say the schools are the hub of the community, right? It's a place where people gather. It's a place where people go for support. It's a place where rec programs happen. It's a place also where children, we grow our children and grow our leaders. And so really can't thank everybody enough. These are some photos of community funding programs. You can see from robotics to art to music. So many things are going on in LCMSD. One other quick highlight that I have for everyone is even in the midst of the pandemic, we saw these low interest rates and LCMSD jumped on them and we were able to refinance the school bonds, which is going to save our taxpayers $6.9 million in interest. Significant. There's no savings to the district. It all goes to the taxpayers. And so we make fiscally responsible decisions and, and just are committed again to this reciprocal relationship with the community. If you haven't been in our schools in a while, these are our amazing schools due to those bonds. Cove School, beautiful facility. You can see here, we have these nano walls that open up so we can create learning suites where we have two classrooms that can have flexible groups and space. We have the same type of nano wall technology going on at Neil Cummins. It's in the back of this one, of this room. Again, amazing facilities at Neil Cummins. And then of course, Hall Middle School has just an incredible athletic facility as well as classroom facilities that you see here. One of the things that I love about going to Hall and why, why these pictures are so important to me is I've had the chances, as mayor, you, you, you shared that I've worked in other middle, other school districts and been around a number of middle schools. One thing I love about the middle schools here in Larkspur Quarter Madera, it's our kids play during recess and lunch. They are still kids and it's because of the bonds and because of being able to have these amazing facilities, they're inviting for kids to play as they should at this age. And I, it's not, it's very unusual. It's not everywhere that kids do this. Sometimes kids just sit on a device the entire time. But here in our district, they play. So I'm not going to jump through the rest of the slides. I think I'll just highlight three quick things. These are our top three goals for the district. Number one is equity. We want every single person in our school district and school community to feel as though they belong. And we also want to ensure and continue to narrow the achievement gaps. Our achievement gaps are an all-time, we've narrowed them over the years and we were, we had the most successful data in the past six years, but our work's not done. We've got a lot more work to do. We want this to be real for everyone. We know in our community, this is not, this is not true. This is not true for everybody that walks through our doors. Not everybody feels this way, but we're committed to doing the work to make sure that, that our, that our teachers, our students, our, our parents, everyone feels this way coming into our schools. Our second, our second main goal is academic growth, making sure that our students are achieving one year's growth and progressing at a high rate. And then finally, making sure that students are, we have a wellness and connectedness program going on in LCMSD. I'm going to hold off right there, but I just, I just want to say, there's so many exciting things going on in Larkspur Quarter Madera Schools. Again, this is due to your support. This is due to community support. This is due to all of us working together. If we, if we don't work, I mean, I think, you know, the pandemic's really shown what community, what communities are made of. Our community was able to tackle some of the impossible things going on in the world and getting kids back into school and really rallying together. And so for that, thank you. We look forward to ongoing partnerships. Again, really appreciate the partnership we get with Todd as well as Ashley Howe, Larkspur, you know, ours, Quarter Madera Parks and Rec on our campuses and just look forward to future opportunities to work with you.
Thanks. Appreciate that. It looks like you guys are doing a lot of hard work and it looks like it's paying off with the distinguished school awards. With that, I'll go ahead and open it up to any council member for questions. Yeah, Eli, go ahead.
Thank you Fred. Thanks, Dr. Geifman, for being with us and for that fantastic presentation and for everything that you guys are doing for our kids. I know it's been a heck of a couple of years for you guys. So we really appreciate it. I was just curious, one of the slides in, in your presentation showed us that I believe it was Cove School is a California goal. I can't remember if it's gold medal, medal or gold ribbon. And then Neil Cummins and Hall are both California distinguished schools. I guess Hall is now national, which is incredible. And I know that Cove and Neil Cummins are both outstanding, award-winning schools. I was just curious for my own education, what are, what's the criteria difference between a gold medal school and a state distinguished school?
Great question. So California had the California Distinguished Schools Award, then it toggled into the gold ribbon. So it kind of rebranded and had some, I think, very similar criteria for gold ribbon. And then now it shifted back into distinguished schools. So it was simply a rebranding for a set number of years. It was only a few years they were gold ribbon schools.
Very interesting. Thanks for sharing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Does anybody else have any other questions? No? Oh, yeah, Eli, go ahead.
Sorry.
There you go.
Meeting problems. Thanks and thanks, Dr. Geifman. It's nice to see you. I've got two kids at Neil Cummins and so we really appreciated your leadership, especially over the last couple of years. I wondered if you could talk a little bit about, we, there was an announcement today, I think about masking, and I just wondered if you could sort of give an update on the pandemic and how that's affecting schools and how you see that going forward.
Absolutely. So, um, yeah, so today I set out a community communication regarding the latest announcement from California, Oregon, and Washington that states that masks are no longer required in schools, but strongly recommended. And so I shared one of our key, again, the keys to success is aligning with local, state, and national public health. And so today I sent out to the community that beginning on, and for us, it's March 15th, because the 14th is a staff development day. So beginning on March 15th, masks are not required indoors into our inner classrooms. However, they're strongly recommended, especially for students and staff members who are unvaccinated. One of the, so I think that that's probably the biggest update. When we take a look, another statistic that I sent out was the CDC map of county, countywide transmission and Califor, I'm sorry, Marin County was one of the few counties in the nation, or specifically in the state, I should say, that have very low transmission. The other combination that we of course have in Marin County is a high rate of vaccination. So, so those two factors are really important in terms of our landscape here in Marin of COVID-19. But those would be the major updates right now.
I know you had one of your slides, a 97% vaccination rate for staff. Which is great. Are you able to share at all vaccination rates for the kids?
Yeah. So our vaccination rates for the students, what we're doing is, gosh, this past couple of weeks, we've had our K through six families complete an actionally survey where they send in their vaccination card. So we'll have that posted on our vaccination dashboard. So on our homepage, you can get to our COVID-19, COVID-19 page. And there, there's a vaccination database. So it has our Hall Middle School stats for our sixth, our seventh and eighth graders as well as we'll shortly be adding our K through sixth grade as well. But our vaccination rates are quite high.
Thanks, Leo. Charles, did you have a question?
Yeah. Hi Brett. Great job on the schools. I mean, I think COVID really changed the trajectory of everyone and that includes the district. And you know, I saw a lot of outgress of families and then we saw an ingress of families. And also, you know, as, as far as the budgets, it's also tied to in future enrollment, right? And so my question is, is do you anticipate because of, like, is the value of the school and the education we provide, is that basically making the community more desirable? And are you seeing more demand for it? What kind of demographics are you looking forward into in the future? What type of housing stock ultimately will help the schools continue to be successful and see the enrollments and enrich, you know, the community for many years to come? If you could speak broadly about those kind of issues, I think it would help the council understand how we can work together to make the community and continue to keep it strong.
Now, thanks for those questions. Um, we actually did, had a demographer study prior, like, I think it was literally like six months before the pandemic, where they projected our enrollment to stay stable at basically 1,500, you know, plus or minus 20 students. Now with the pandemic, we did have an enrollment drop as a number of school districts did receive. Of our 200 student drops since the beginning of the pandemic, 75% of those students and families moved out of our, our local area. A lot of them left the state, actually. 25% moved to private schools, online schools, or charter schools. And so that, that was their choice there. What we're seeing right now is we are seeing an increase in student registrations. So we just, I actually just had a report on that the other day where we are almost at the kindergarten registration totals for last year right now. And we're in this first wave. So
Sorry about that. I contributed to that this.
You contributed. Thank you, Charles. So, um, so it's, it's great to see the registration, one, coming in early for our planning purposes, but two, coming in so strong. So we'll see if this pattern continues, but our hope is to get back to what that study said, that our, our, our numbers would level off around that 1,500. In terms of desirability for our community, we absolutely get a number of inter-district permit transfer requests on a regular basis. I see those throughout the entire school year, especially during, you know, registration for the upcoming year where there are families from other communities, anywhere from Reed to San Rafael to Nevada to Kentfield, wanting to come to Larkspur Quarter Madera Schools. So I have to look at those, you know, very closely and with enrollment. One of the challenges that we're seeing is for young families to be able to afford our area. Our schools are desirable. Our community is highly desirable, but affordability of housing is a major challenge. And so, you know, that is, that's one thing that we are concerned about for the future, not only for our enrollment, but then also for our staffing purposes. So staff being able to afford. We do have great partnerships with some local housing entities that have, that have really helped that. And so our hope again is that there will be more, I guess, variety of housing options for families and staff to continue taking advantage of our great community and great schools.
Thanks, Charles. Any other questions? I just have one. Go ahead, Lita. And then Bob.
Sorry, Bob. Um, I was just gonna ask, I had heard rumors a while ago about possibly redrawing district lines so that some of the people that live really close to Cove can go to Cove instead of going to Reed. And I just wondered if there was any, any update about that.
That's been an ongoing conversation. It was attempted in 2010 and then another time in 2013. Both times it did not move forward. What, what needs to happen is both school boards need to agree on the attendance boundary adjustment. And then there's a committee at the county level who then also has to give the stamp of approval. So unfortunately, in those, those two circumstances, it did not pass through that, that county level piece and/or both school boards. So as of right now, there, there isn't a, you know, active discussion about redrawing boundary lines. However, we do have a partnership with Reed Union. Currently, we have 46 students on inter-district permit, many of which live in that geographic area of Quarter Madera, right across from Cove School. We, we've had meetings very recently with, with Reed as well in terms of what does the future look like for enrollment and supporting those families that live close by to Cove and that have that desire to continue in Larkspur Quarter Madera. So it's definitely a topic of that partnership piece rather than redrawing attendance boundary lines. Cause that's been unfortunately quite a challenge.
Thanks. Bob, go ahead.
That was actually my question, but can I make a comment?
Sure.
Brett, I just wanted to say thank you. I was the school liaison when you first started, as you, I'm sure remember when we met at first. And you walked into a very tumultuous and difficult situation. And you have done an incredible job, not just with the schools, but of bringing the community back together behind you and the schools. And I just wanted to thank you for that and recognize you for that, because it's really been a terrific job. And it was, it was tough and you have far exceeded expectations. So thank you for everything you've done for the community. Cause as I said, you, you walked into a tough one. So thank you.
Thank you so much for saying that. That really means a lot. Your outreach, especially that, you know, early days was, was so appreciated. And a number of you I've had fantastic conversations with. So thank you all for your support. It's a great community. It's a great place to live. It's a great place to go to school. It's a great place to be. So I'm just so proud of what we've been able to accomplish and what our community does to support our schools.
I have one question for you, then we'll go to public comment. I know you do a lot of collaboration, a lot of partnership with our park and rec department. I know they provide a lot of after-school programming. Is there any other support or what kind of support would you be looking for from either the town or our park and rec department going forward?
I think.
Even if you have a wish list type thing, I'd rather have you get it out there so we know what you may be looking for down the road or currently.
Yeah. I mean, one of, you know, Ashley Howe's been fantastic to work with. It's, it's something where growing the parks and rec program, just basically providing more opportunities for our families and for our students. One thing that we are noticing is that especially with our younger families, there's a higher frequency of households where both parents work out of the home. And so what that requires is an increased demand on childcare and an increased demand on high-quality childcare. And so what, what Parks and Rec has been able to provide is those, are those high-quality options. I see opportunities for expansion of those. I also see opportunities for younger, you know, even pre-K type programs potentially in the future. Another thing that we're definitely interested in is Another thing that we're definitely interested in is athletic facilities. That's something that's really important to us. And it's important not only during the school day for, you know, recreational PE, building that healthy lifestyle, but then also again, giving our kids, continuing to provide our kids with opportunities outside of school. So if we have access to, you know, turf fields, if we have access to other athletic, athletic, uh, you know, facilities, it, it not only benefits our students, but we, we also believe that it benefits the community too. So those would be our wish list, uh, could just continue expanding programming and offer, offering before and after school as well as athletics.
Okay. Thanks. Appreciate that. And I'm sure you're aware, we're going through a master, uh, planning process with Park and Rec. And one of the things I know has come up, uh, which I like the term that was used the other night at the Park and Rec Commission, meaning was a multi-perp, a multi-all-purpose athletic field.
That.
So again, that may be down the road, cause again, we have processes in place to try to get, but, um, it sounds like similar to some what, what you're talking about. Uh, Charles, one more question, then we'll open up for public comment. Go ahead, Charles.
Brett, I think this is a really important part that, um, you know, I'm gonna ask the question is, you really emphasize, um, uh, physical education, right? And I think usually that scene is just exercise or the sport, but I think you, you understand, or can you explain that I, that it actually has reciprocal kind of, um, effects on the actual education back in the classroom, right? And could you expand on that or just, um, kind of discuss that more? It's not just about kids going and, and running around it. There's, there's more to it than that. And I think it's important for, for me and others to understand, um, what, what you're really trying to do with that to create the comprehensive education that the children deserve.
Absolutely. I mean, uh, you know, the physical education component contributes to overall wellness. But as you're, as you're pointing out, Charles, it does also activate students' readiness to learn. And so, you know, Cove in Motion, I think is a, a great example of that. That's an opportunity where kids are outside four days a week. They're going through a physical, physical activity, having fun, right, on, on the way into school. But what it does is it activates them, getting them ready to learn for that school day. That's why, that's one of the main reasons why we do Cove in Motion, why our physical education programs, why our parcel tax funds our physical education teachers at the elementary level. There's so much to it, not only in that space, the learning space, but it's also the socialization space. School is about academics, but it's also about socialization. There are so many things taught through the PE coursework that also applies to the playground and navigating other social situations. So our students benefit so much from that. And just to, just to, you know, reiterate one point, the fact that we have the facilities like that turf field, that Hall Middle School, that, that is so desirable for students, they just want to get out and play. And then they come back in and they're, they're able to continue having a successful day. So, uh, but thanks for mentioning that, Charles. It's a big, it's a big, big issue, big point.
Thanks. And with that, if there's no other questions from town council members, we'll go to public comment and we have Roy Wolford, who has a hand raised. And thanks for being patient, Roy. We've had it for a while. Uh, go ahead, Roy.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, good evening, Brett. Kudos to you for, uh, having the in-person learning. I think that is terrific. I did receive the mailer and, uh, kinda curious about, um, you know, maintaining excellent. That's terrific, but I'm looking at the pictures. And so on the front cover, there's a picture of two people, looks like a student and an instructor. And then it, uh, opening it up, there's another picture of two students working and then another student working. They all have masks, but you don't. And I think that's very Gavin O'Nusen-esque, uh, but I would like to get your input, uh, and, and kind of a, a survey of how the kids feel, the, the, the students feel about having masks. I know I don't like having a mask on to this day. And if you really have a mask that is really gonna do the job of, of preventing anything coming in or out, it's gotta be clamped on and it's really oppressive to use. And I, I just can't stand it. And I'm, I'm thinking that, uh, hopefully, uh, the, you know, the masks come off and the kids get liberated. And you were mentioning about playing outside. I hope they're not running around with masks on. I think I've seen some kids, uh, going outside and playing with masks. And I just think that defeats the purpose of the physical education. The other item I'd like you to address is the equity issue. Now I'm concerned with this whole equity issue because it, it came up with all the unrest over the last two years. The, the, the democratic socialist, uh, of America, one of their major pillars is equity. So we're talking about equality of outcome, not equality of opportunity. So I'd like you to try to, to address the equity issue versus the equality issue. Cause I think it's very important to this, for the students to learn about equality. Equity, what are we gonna distribute everybody's, uh, income at the school? Or, uh, you and all the staff and everybody has the same income? That's equity. But equality is the opportunity to gain. And I see somebody, uh, Amy shaking her head. So, um, I, I think I have to disagree with you, Amy. And Brett, please, I, I, I hope you can articulate on those two items I brought up. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Brett. What we'll do is let's go through a public comment. And if we have other questions, maybe if you can respond to some of those after we close public comment, that'd be great. So with that, let's go to Joel is next with his hand raised.
Joel, are you able to mute yourself?
Yeah, I'm unmuting right now. Are you able to hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, Brett, I just wanna say thank you for what you've done over the past years. I think you've done a great job in the face of, uh, some difficult years. So thank you. I saw the comments and the pictures of the sports fields and I 100% support giving our students and our community members more access to athletic fields and figuring out a way to let them play longer, uh, into the winter season. But I would ask that, that the town and the school district keep their mind open about the environmental impact of artificial turf. And please seriously consider what the alternatives are with a sand and, uh, natural turf seed-based field. Because I think with proper drainage, we can achieve the same outcome for our students with, uh, less impact on the environment. So, uh, just ask that you please look at the alternatives without throwing 75,000 square feet of plastic into Port of Madera Town Park. Thank you.
Thanks, Joel. I don't see any other hands raised. Rebecca, did we get any email comments in? I think you might be muted.
Uh, I was just refreshing the email and, uh, no, America says we did not receive any emails, public comments, but Pat Ravazza.
Okay, uh, if you can bring Pat over, please.
Hi, everybody. Uh, I just wanna join the chorus of thank yous for all the good things I hear now about our school. We have a lot of young neighbors and I talk to them frequently to find out what's going on. And I don't think I can remember a time when there was such a, a good level of satisfaction with what's happening in our school district. And I do wanna support the notion of equity and fairness. We listened, uh, the whole council listened to a very good fair housing, um, report that I encourage everyone to go back and, and look at, because they're basically saying that all of our communities would be better off with, uh, a little bit more diversity. And my three girls who grew up here in the Twin Cities loved it. They had great educational experiences, but now they look back and they say, wow, we didn't realize how white it was. And we really think that we missed out because we were sort of more sheltered than we would have liked to have been. So I think, uh, a diversity is a good thing. I think some affordable housing, um, will continue to bring that in. And I salute, uh, the superintendent and all those who are working to, um, to create more equitable and, and, uh, uh, community that, that other, that not just wealthy people can afford. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Pat. Appreciate that. And I don't see any other hand raised. And as soon we don't have any emails that came in, Rebecca.
Uh, no, no emails were received via the public comment email.
Thanks. With that, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Brett, can you just maybe briefly address, um, the couple of questions that Roy had? You don't mind, just briefly?
Happy to do so. Um, so the first one, uh, in regards to the photos, uh, you know, those are, those are actually stock photos that are used. It was done by a communications consultant. I, I definitely understand that was a headshot used for that piece, but it wasn't meant to, to be in any, uh, Newsom-esque type thing as, as might have, might have been interpreted. But in terms of the masks in general, let's talk about that. Uh, masks are, uh, not required as of March 15th. Uh, actually it's, it, it starts on 11, at 11:59 PM on March 11th is the actual date. Our first school day then is March 15th. So students will have the option to wear masks or not. In terms of outdoors, our students, uh, haven't had to wear masks outdoors if they don't want to for quite some time now. Um, we, when they're running around, we actually, you know, encourage, you know, hey, it's fine to take off your mask. Time, fine to run around with your friends that way. In terms of our equity work, um, you know, I, I just wanna share just a, a quick example of why opening up schools for in-person learning is a prime example of equity work in action. Here's what we quickly find out, found out, we shut down schools. We had a whole range. We had parents that hired retired teachers to come into their household and work with their student or some students. We also had students who had to complete their distance learning in a closet at their parents' workplace. The, the access and opportunities to learning were completely, were, were very much so dependent on the environment in which the student was currently in. It created a situation where those kids that had access to an adult at home with them the entire time had a lot more support than the child that was in a closet working on their Zoom, uh, throughout the entire pandemic. And that's why for us, it was so important to get kids back at school. So I, I, I show that as we want to remove those barriers, um, and allow, create a system where students get what they need. And kids need different things at different times. And so, and it's not a one-size-fits-all or equal across the board. Kids need different things at different times. And right now, what I can say, it's unacceptable that in our district, we have achievement gaps. And achievement gaps, we know are everywhere across the nation, across the state. It's still unacceptable. Just because that's the way it is, doesn't mean it's right. And so what we're committed to doing is narrowing those achievement gaps and also narrowing the access and inclusion gaps. We know the participation of our students of color and/or our stu-, our socio-economically disadvantaged families is less than our, uh, majority families. And so we need, we need to change that. And so we're going through, uh, and we have been for a number of years, uh, a lot of professional development and support. We've actually had UCLA come in and do some evaluation of what's going on in our classrooms to help us, to give us some actual data on what's, what are we doing, uh, and how can we make things better? Finally, in terms of the, the turf consideration, appreciate your comments. And, and that's absolutely something that's always top of mind. Um, when we take a look at any sort of structure or any sort of, uh, improvement, capital improvement on our properties, what are those environmental considerations? How can we gather information from experts as well as the community to help guide these decisions? So appreciate you bringing that up and, uh, and look forward to continuing those conversations in the future.
Thanks, Brett. And if there's nothing else, I, I just wanna thank you also. You're doing just really fantastic work. Uh, I think Bob kinda hit the nail on the head where he said, where you were back in July 2017, fast forward five years, just the progress you've made with the school district. It's just tremendous work that you're doing. Um, I'm some, somewhat hopeful, cause I know Ashley's really great, that she can maybe help you out with some of the support you mentioned here tonight. It may be down the road somewhere, but I know she is really good about problem solving, trying to figure out in the collaboration. So again, appreciate all, all your hard work. And the other thing I like to see is, I don't know, we, have you been to town council before on a presentation like this? Do you remember?
I, I have not. No, this is, I've been in committees and things of that sort, but I think this is my first town council presentation.
Okay. I think you did such a great job. I'd like to see you come back on an annual basis, cause I think that partnership and collaboration is something I think that we need, uh, to keep going. But I also that when these presentations happen, it just keeps us on a learning experience and also helps inform the public. So I'd like to see if we can get you on our annual presentation list, if that's okay with you.
That would be fantastic. I'd love to.
And again, thanks for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you all so much. Appreciate it and have a great rest of your evening.
Thanks.
Thanks.
And with that, we're gonna move to the consent calendar. Uh, these are items which are routine in nature and they've been previously discussed. So they don't require further discussion. Uh, they can be approved by a single motion. Any member of the town council staff or public can have an item pulled, uh, for further discussion. So with that, is there anybody from the town council, uh, staff or the public wishes to have an item pulled, uh, for additional discussion? I don't see any hands raised. Rebecca, did we get any emails in?
No, America says we did not receive any emailed public comment, or emailed, uh, comments on consent calendar items.
Uh, thank you. So with that, I'll go ahead and close public comment. And can we get a motion to approve, uh, consent items for A through 4G? Eli has the motion. Is there a second? Ooh, Bob beat you by a microsecond, Lea. Uh, Bob's second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mangan?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
And America Sisa.
Yes. Uh, with that, we'll go ahead and move to item 5A, which is public hearings. Uh, this is introduction of possible adoption of an urgency ordinance that we discussed, uh, previously to extend it through March 1st, 2023. And it has to do with SB 9 projects. And with that, I'm just turn it over to Adam and Martha's online also, in case there's any additional questions for a staff report, please. And we are looking for a motion, correct, to extend this?
Yeah, yes, that's correct. We have a, a, a new urgency ordinance, number 1017 for your consideration and possible adoption this evening.
Okay.
So thank you, uh, mayor and council members tonight. We are presenting a, um, as we just discussed, an urgency ordinance, number 1017 for your consideration, possible adoption. Uh, this urgency ordinance would extend urgency ordinance, number 1015, which was adopted by the town council on January 18th, uh, 2022. And this would extend that urgency ordinance, essentially another, um, well, it's another, uh, 10 and a half months until March 1st, uh, 2023. And if you recall, um, on January 18th, 2022, um, staff presented a legislation, Senate Bill 9, to you at that time, which relates to, um, state legislation that allowed for what are called urban lot splits in single-family residential zoning districts. And, uh, new development pursuant to those lot splits through ministerial action. And so, uh, I'm not gonna go through that again this evening where we are available to answer questions, however, if you have them. So that is essentially what is before you tonight. Again, the purpose of this, uh, is to allow staff the time to, um, basically put together, conduct study, um, research, uh, the necessary sort of information to put together a more permanent ordinance related to Senate Bill 9 projects. And that's, uh, still staff's intention. Um, we did, we have been working with the town attorney and, um, uh, other planners throughout Marin County and, uh, the Bay Area and really, um, throughout the state. I'm trying to sort of learn from others and, uh, figure out how, uh, staff should approach our ordinance for the town. And with that, I will, uh, stop the presentation and open up for questions that you may have on this urgency ordinance.
I, I have one quick question for you. How many applications, I wanna say, have you received to date? And how many have been approved? And how many units are we talking about?
Yeah, no, we've, we've received five applications for the lot split. And so just, it's actu-, this is actually a sequential process. So there, the first part of the, the process is really for splitting a, a lot into two. And then the second part would potentially be, uh, development on, um, uh, either one or both lots. either one or both lots. And so we're still at the application review stage of the five applications that we've received. And we have received, I will say, we have received a lot of questions. We get questions quite a bit, and Martha can speak to this as well about about the homeowners and others potentially taking advantage of this state legislation. We have three others that I would say are sort of likely to at some point develop into an application at this point. And so that's sort of the numbers we're talking about now, but you know, it's still, I think, all involved are sort of trying to understand how to basically interpret some of the state legislation. And then what's been helpful for us at the staff level with the urgency ordinance adopted on January eighteenth and then potentially extended through this urgency ordinance would be that we have a more defined process now with which to actually review these applications. So that's been helpful.
Okay. Do you know if your counterparts in other towns or cities are getting a lot of applications? Or is it just a slow trend?
Do you want to speak to that? I know you've spoken to some others.
Yeah, I've spoken with a couple other planning departments in the county. It seems that we're receiving more applications than many of our other counterparts. I know there's a couple cities, San Antonio, for example, they haven't received any applications yet, but they've been fielding questions. I think it's pretty common whenever there's a new piece of legislation, homeowners hear about it and they just have a lot of questions about it. So we are getting quite a few questions. I would say, you know, one to two questions a day from residents, just trying to understand the legislation and then exploring if this is something that, you know, they are interested in doing.
Okay, thanks. And I just have one last question because I know you guys do great work. You guys work really quick. But just, and I look at worst case, if we had to, if March rolls around next year, can we extend the urgency one another X amount of months? Just again, backup plan?
Yeah, there, there is one more opportunity and I'll look to Amy to confirm this, but one more opportunity to extend the urgency ordinance and it would be for an additional one year. And then that would be the maximum amount of time where we would be able to have this urgency ordinance in effect.
Okay, thanks. Are there any other questions from town council members? Yeah, Bob?
Yeah, for Todd and maybe Amy. And Todd and I have been talking about this a little bit. Is there any effort being made or any possibility of adding anything to this in the future that will help us control development in high fire danger zones, areas where there are really narrow roads? I know Sausalito has tried to do something about that and we have massive areas where this is a problem. And I think it's a real concern, but is that a possibility that we might be able to pursue something like that? Thank you.
We are working on, we're working on that issue and along with some other jurisdictions. And we, we think there may be, I'm not quite ready to, to give you an answer because I'm still working on it, but I do believe we'll be able to look at the issue and in areas that don't meet certain fire mitigation standards to, to possibly be able to restrict the development there. But it's something we're still researching and we're still working on, but I'm, I'm fairly optimistic that we can, we can come up with something for the, for those areas in the high fire zones that, that don't meet current standards. It would not be a blanket exemption, but it would be, for example, if the roadways don't meet current fire evacuation standards. So I guess I would say stay tuned. And I hope to have something for council at the next meeting or two.
Thank you, because we have big areas where the fire roads, where the roads do not meet fire evacuation standards. Thanks.
I'm sorry, Leela, one quick tag along to Amy. Do you know if there's anything regarding like affordability element to any thing related to SB nine? Any towns or cities are trying to get it so that, again, we're looking at equity and quality and trying to get affordability in there for those units if they're built, potentially?
Yeah, I mean, SB nine, there's a tension because it is a very limited development because you're limited to splitting your lot and putting four units on, but at the same time, you're prohibited from doing anything that would appear to block implementation of SB nine. So even though the goal is more affordable housing, if we were to put in a condition that the housing had to be low income, then the state could argue that was a condition that prohibits implementation of SB nine by reducing the incentive for creating more housing by making it less affordable. I mean, it's a weird dichotomy because I mean, your goal makes a lot of sense. I think what the state would argue is some of the other measures that it's passed recently regarding multifamily housing, increased density and so forth, if you, you plan for more lower income and middle income units are moving toward that. But we may not be able to implement it through SB nine. I'm not seeing right now most many jurisdictions putting any kind of affordability limits on SB nine. I think there was one jurisdiction that said, you know, all units had to be affordable, but my guess is the state is going to find that to be contrary to SB nine's dictates that that the, the cities take no action that would prohibit people from doing the lot splits, but we'll see. The Attorney General has a housing strike force and we all saw them come out very quickly against the town of Woodside proposing no SB nine because it would, they were a Mount of Mayan sanctuary. So you know, I think we'll, we'll watch these developments and see, you know, see what happens, but it's, you know, I, it's a hard one. You know, if we want to, to put in affordability restriction, I just, I don't know how the state would look at that and say that, no, you're just trying to prohibit SB nine developments. So it's, it's a tough, it's a tough one.
Okay. And just food for thought, maybe not a hundred percent, but even fifty percent, just to get that out there. I'm sorry, Leela, go ahead.
No worries. Thanks. I think I know the answer to this question, but I know part of the reason we felt the urgency of passing the first ordinance was that we really were lacking guidance from the state on how to implement SB nine. And I, you know, it's been, I guess, a couple of months and I just wanted to make sure, like, we haven't gotten like a whole bunch of guidance from them or anything, have we?
Yeah, no, we haven't. We keep hearing, though, there's something in the works, but it's just still waiting on it to drop from Sacramento. So
Okay.
Hopefully, you know, the next couple of months or so and we can get something, but we just don't have a timeline yet.
Okay.
Clamoring for it, but thank you for the question.
And if we, if that does come down and it's really helpful and it sort of makes some of this unnecessary, I know we would be approving this for a year, but there's nothing that requires us to keep it as is for a year, right? We could revisit it and, okay. And when we first considered the original urgency ordinance, there were a couple of public comments that were against us adopting the ordinance. I think they were from homeowners who were concerned it was going to, you know, present roadblocks to them. And I just, I don't know if those are any of the families that you've been speaking to, but I wonder if you have, have you been getting complaints or are there any feedback that you've been getting from the community about the one that's currently in place?
So we've, we've sort of spread these around for our planning staff. So we're each dealing with different, so we each getting to know how to process these applications, myself included, but also to, so we're dealing with different, different sort of residents and, and clients and customers. But so from my perspective, you know, I think there were some, the one on Montecito, for example, the one issue that has been raised there was the requirement for a fire hydrant to be placed on Cordero Avenue. So I think that was going to be very cost prohibitive. So we'll just see where that goes. That, you know, I think the important thing is that we're getting these comments out now at this early stage during the lot split part of the applications. And so we're, it sort of becomes a discussion and conversation about some of the standards that we have and the reasons behind them and whether or not that that poses problems for the applicants or not. But that's a standard sort of building protocol requirement in any case. Martha, maybe you can speak to.
Yeah, I will add that two of the homeowners that provided public comment have submitted SB nine urban lot split applications, one on Chapman and then another one on Meadow Street. And we have been notifying all the applicants in addition to residents we've been speaking to with questions about any, any town council meetings related to SB nine. We provided them with both the the public hearing notice for this meeting and then also the staff report as well. So we are making a, an effort to make sure anyone who has had questions or expressed interest is aware of these meetings.
Gotcha. Great. Okay. And then just one or two more questions. And does this actually change anything in the urgency ordinance or is it just an extension?
It's just an extension. There were some clarifying modifications that were, I think we included in attachment five, just to make sure the language was actually clear to the reader. And also stated the actual intent of what we intended it to say, which we realized upon a second sort of review of it after the January adoption that needed some additional work there.
Okay. And I don't remember, how long was the original one to be effective? Like, when does that expire if we didn't pass the extension?
Yeah, March fifth would otherwise expire. Yeah.
Okay. And then I just, I know for urgency ordinances, the bar's a little higher. Maybe Amy can speak to this in terms of the findings that we need to make. If we did need to, like, somebody mentioned extending this like another year. Is there a point at which it would make sense to just pass it as an ordinary ordinance as opposed to using the urgency ordinance process?
I mean, yeah, I think the, the goal here would be to have an ordinance in place and we would go through the planning commission and so forth. Under state law, the initial urgency ordinance only lasts forty-five days, which is really kind of nothing. So almost every jurisdiction is doing the exact same thing you are, is extending for another year. And I think most jurisdictions anticipate then that we'll go through the normal process and, you know, enact a regular ordinance. I think everyone is a little bit looking at what everyone else is doing and what their ordinances look like. And you know, A-BAG is supposed to come out with some model stuff in the next month or two. So I think everyone's sort of in this period of we've done the best we can on short notice to implement this kind of hard to understand or, you know, statute. And, you know, we'll all be working on going through the regular process and, and passing a standard ordinance within the next year.
Got it. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
It's somewhat ironic because I think when we initially passed this, I think you said A-BAG was supposed to be coming out with something in the next month. And it's like forty-five days later. So it is what it is. Quick question, Amy, because I think you kind of said this, I want to clarify this. Because I thought you said that you were doing more research on the wildfire aspect of this. But then I thought you said that you may be coming back to us at our next meeting or the meeting after that one. Does that mean you'll be coming back and we'd have to update this again for whatever provisions you find? Did I hear that correctly or?
No, we may be coming back on a matter relating to designating areas as severe high fire areas, which might affect how SB nine applies in those areas. But, but we wouldn't be, it wouldn't necessitate an amendment to this urgency ordinance.
Okay. It would just be a tie, it would tie back to this ordinance though, right? By designating those high wildfire areas?
Right. And it might, and it likely would have an impact on, on, on some of the some of SB nine's exceptions and how it applies in certain, in certain high fire areas.
Okay, thanks. Are there any other questions from town council members? Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public which should speak on this subject? And I believe we have Corinne.
Corinne, I've, I've unmuted you.
Uh, yeah, this is Corinne Grant and my husband Jeff. We would both like to speak. My husband's going to go first. If he doesn't use all his time, does it roll over to me?
I'll go ahead and give it to you.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I'll, I'll let you two fight over the time thing. Hello, everyone. I just
I'll just be, I'll be ready to stop, pause the timer.
You guys, I want to commend you for the time that you're spending on this, on this and other. You guys have been very busy. We can see that. My issues have to do with, I think it was just a notice. I'm not sure that it was included in ten fifteen and I haven't seen ten seventeen. But if it was included in that, it said that if you do not agree with any part of this or you plan to challenge any part of this, that you have to do so at this meeting or it's waived. And I don't know, can you maybe just tell me whether that was included in the amendment or is that just in the notice?
Let's do this. Let's go through yourself and your wife. Let me go through all public comment in case there's any other questions. And then we'll answer all the questions after I close public comment.
Okay, well, let me just make the comments so then we don't, we don't have to forget about it. I just want to send, for the record, say that if that is the case, that you have to make the objections now, then I object to any portion of this urgency ordinance, ten fifteen or ten seventeen that do not comport with or in violation or are inconsistent with the letter intent of SB nine as passed by the state of California. So I'll just make that general comment in response. And then that's, yeah, we can address the rest later.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, my turn. I am, Jeff and I have, we are one of the families that has already put in an application for a lot split. I want, I want to urge you to not adopt the current version of the urgency order. I'd rather that you review it, rewrite it. And this is why. I've been looking at a lot of housing floor plans for years because I was going to build an ADU, doing something, and now I'm going to do a lot split. What I've found is that twelve hundred square feet is really the sweet spot. I'm not sure why you decided on a thousand square feet. Twelve hundred square foot gives you two bedroom, two bath plus an office for working at home. It's not a lot of space. There's no family room, dining room, et cetera. It's a small family home. And this is what, Jeff and I have lived here for forty-plus years. This is what is being destroyed in most of the areas that we look at in Southern Marin. Birdland around Good Earth in Mill Valley, bottom of Horse Hill, the Horse Hill neighborhood in Mill Valley, Madera Gardens around No Commons. Those used to be the size of house, twelve hundred square feet, eleven hundred square feet. And they're being enlarged, doubled, tripled in size. So only very wealthy families can afford to buy them or rent them. I think that California needs more housing. We've already determined that, need to increase our density. Who do we want to appeal to move to our, our town? I think we want young families. They keep our community vibrant. They use the parks, the bike paths, the schools. They sell Girl Scout cookies. The families, you'll find them at the town center, at the restaurants. The street we live on, for the past fifteen years, there's been no children, zero.
Hey Corinne, I'm sorry. Rebecca, reset the timer and then you'll have three minutes.
Okay.
Thanks, sorry, go ahead.
Ready? So zero children. We just had one family finally move in that has two teenagers. And the mandate from the state of California, the law said eight hundred square feet as a minimum. So I want to challenge you to increase your maximum a bit from a thousand square feet to twelve hundred. If you start looking at floor plans, because the smaller ones are really meant for singles or couples, which we've been building some of that housing. I mean, the Tamaridge is small apartments, whatever. And I also question the height limits. You guys, the, the height limit, why isn't it the same as for ADUs? Which were a lot of them were going to be above garages, et cetera. I'm not sure why we have the height limit that we do. And I also, this is another subject, we have to split our lot sixty forty. We have a big lot. We have two acres. So our lot split, we will have an eighth tenth of an acre, thirty-two thousand square feet. I don't know, you know, the ordinance, some people will have twelve hundred square feet. Would there be some way that it could be a little proportional to the lot size rather than just a uniform, whatever, thousand square feet available? Most people won't be able to fit bigger than that, but I'd like the option. I'm also concerned I'm also concerned with more concerned with building requirements for fire hardening new structures. I don't know if you guys have thought of that, but that's what we really need in this area. We know we're in a high fire danger. The whole town is. Christmas Tree Hill, given its worst, where we live is next to Horse Hill. So I don't know if there's been given any thought to what kind of fire hardening requirements are going to be on all these new housing units we potentially have. So I urge you to not extend this for another year, possibly two years. I also want to bring up the point that I'm not getting any younger. I'm going to be sixty five this summer, you know? Do we really need to draw this out another two years before we decide what is reasonable housing? And I want to remind you once again that this law was put in place because all of us small, wealthy towns have resisted getting denser housing. And it's time to do it and it's time to stop fighting it and figure out ways around it and loopholes and and get it done. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks for the comments. I don't see any other hand raised. Rebecca, we get any email comments in?
Just refreshing one more time. And no, we did not receive any email public comments on this item.
Thank you. And I don't see a hand raised. I'll go ahead and close public comment. Adam, Martha, or Amy, can you address any of those questions? I figure I have a good one in three chance.
I can, maybe I can start with the with the size comment. And give a little bit of background on that. So you know, with respect to the unit size, that was frankly, something that we were considering, what is the right size? A thousand square feet, twelve hundred square feet was also something that was considered. Obviously, we're, again, looking at this quickly, relatively quickly. But it is also something that we looked at with respect to the accessory dwelling units. And similarly there, we currently have a max unit size of a thousand square feet. And that's per state law for two bedroom accessory dwelling. ADUs do have the ability with a, actually with a discretionary permit to get up to twelve hundred square feet. And so there is that flexibility there, which isn't really offered necessarily in our urgency ordinance. But the other thing to note is that that may be the size for one unit. SB nine obviously allows you to build two units or duplex. And each of the units is allowed to basically go up to a thousand square feet under this urgency ordinance. But, you know, I will say that trying to find the exact right size, we're we're sort of between. We've seen units built that are around thousand square feet. We've seen units built at twelve hundred square feet. It's not going to work for exactly the same for every particular homeowner. There's a lot of different choices that homeowners make with that, with respect to that. I would maybe kick the height, I think there was a height question to to Martha. Maybe you can talk a little bit about how our ordinance works with respect to height.
Yes, so the the town recently adopted Title twenty two, which establishes the objective design and development standard. And there's a zone within Title twenty two, which is the T three edge neighborhood. And those standards are applied to SB nine projects that are submitted for new housing units. So the height limit within that, the T three edge zone is twenty two feet to the highest keys in parapet and then a maximum height of thirty feet, which is matches the height limit in the residential zoning district. However, SB nine does allow you to reduce side and rear yard setbacks to four feet. So in instances where a homeowner reduces the setback and puts the new unit in essentially, think of it as in the rear yard. There's a height limit of a maximum of sixteen feet. And that height limit is consistent with the ADU ordinance, which also allows the height of sixteen feet for detached units. There is a provision in the ADU ordinance where the height can be twenty five feet if it's above a garage. So that that provision currently is not in the SB nine ordinance. So you can have a taller structure if you're meeting the setbacks of that T three edge zone, which are very similar to the setbacks in the R one district. But if you reduce those setbacks and take advantage of the reduced setbacks that the statute allows, then the height limit is is a maximum of sixteen feet. So it's kind of a tiered height depending on where the unit is located.
And the purpose, obviously, is as you get closer to somebody else's property in those setbacks, that you're sort of reducing the potential, well, the height associated with it and the potential impacts as a result of that height. And that was the idea behind that sort of different tiered height system that was developed. Was in there was, was there one other? Sorry. Maybe that was.
I think there was one question or comment about the ratio of resulting lot sizes.
I think it's what, why did, essentially, why does one size fit all? If you have a bigger lot versus a smaller lot, it still has the same size.
Yeah, I mean, again, if there's a you could go essentially, we're not customizing, you know, the zoning regulations necessarily to every single lot or situation that we have in town, obviously. So it's gonna work better for some and not as great for others. But, you know, the goal is to make something that is reasonable and that works relatively well for for all in these residential zoning districts. That is something we, I think, did we consider that in the ADU ordinance? That we did have some provisions for larger lot sizes at one point.
Yes, at one point, we were in the AD ordinance considering allowing by right, a larger ADU of twelve hundred square feet. If you had, we're on a parcel of X size. So those are things we could consider and evaluate as part of the development of this permanent ordinance.
Right. And and I think that's the key thing. It's like all these comments are helpful. And to listen to these comments as we start to think about what the permanent sort of town requirement should be. But I would note, a lot of these larger lot sizes or lots that we're talking about are in these fire zones and these higher fire zone risk zones in town. So, for example, if I'm Metta Crest or what have you.
I have one other question before I open up for discussion. What happens if we don't pass this tonight? What happens?
Well, essentially, we, as of March fifth, we would just default to, we would still have the objective design standards that Martha was referring to, the T three edge zones. Although I don't believe the tiered height system would be actually in place. And now some of the modifications to the the T three edge zone would would sort of go away. And we wouldn't have the, maybe more importantly, the square footage cap on the units that were built pursuant to SB nine, which is the thousand square feet that we were talking about earlier. So it would be essentially default to the regular underlying zoning district regulations with respect to maximum floor area allowed to be built on a lot. And that varies from parcel to parcel, depending on where you, what zoning district you're in, if you're in an R one A versus an R one, etc. So a lot of the, and and I think there's also well, we could, you know, the the process and the noticing requirements, the process requirements, those all importantly, also go away. And we're not left with the the guidance for processing these applications that we have with the urgency ordinance.
Okay, thanks. It sounds like we'd be taking a step backwards then to a certain degree. With that, let me go ahead and open it up to other county council members for other questions and or discussion. And we are looking for a possible motion to adopt urgency ordinance number one oh one seven. Charles had his hand up first. So let's go to Charles, then Bob, and then I saw Eli sneak a hand in also. So we'll go in that order. So go ahead, Charles.
Okay, so, you know, I've been on the planning commission before and we've talked about this in much more detail. And so I really want to thank the grants for speaking to this and help inform me. While they spoke to their own specific, you know, application or future application or issues, you know, this is for the larger town. But the issue that they bring up is basically what's by right under this ordinance and what would come, what basically gets to a threshold where the state has decided that it's no longer a state right, given it comes back under local control and your neighbors have a say about, you know, bulk and mass and and effect on their properties. And the state determined the thousand square feet. So even if we don't pass the emergency ordinance, it would default to that. So what they're asking is for us to modify it to actually give them more. And I think that while that can still be explored, I think that that kind of ask is not something that you can make on the fly based on one comment for the whole community. And I would say that with the ADUs, which have been well vetted over a longer period of time, the thousand square feet was determined to be even that we didn't, it was twelve hundred, it went back to eight hundred because that's by right what the state gave for ADUs. And the reason is, is because the state also is constantly adjusting that as well. And it became a minute, you know, basically, we didn't want staff to keep coming back to the commission and then the council to continually modify whatever they decided, you know, this legislation year, they wanted it to be. That was part of the reason. And part of it is, is, you know, these are all state laws. They take away local control. So if you're going to use them and support them, then it's the state and we shouldn't be, you know, getting involved at all. But in this one, what they brought up and what I think the sticking point is, is something where they're asking for more. And the question the council has to ask themselves with all our constituents is, at what point do we feel comfortable approving, you know, two twelve hundred square foot units plus an ADU by right without noticing or having any kind of public discourse versus what the state has mandated we do? And, you know, I think that that's a discussion we should have, but I think we should know what that is. And maybe I'm not seeing it correctly. And and, you know, yeah, and and also, could you clarify, Amy, with the with the issues brought up, it it does it have to be a specific issue? You can't challenge the whole thing as you have, you you have to basically point out fundamental flaws at a at a lower level that the grants might have or ultimately as a blanket statement that I might challenge this in the future effective for what their, what their desires are. Because if not, I would like to let them come back and speak to something more specific if they're held to that and are looking for those kind of you know, public discourse and and so.
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure I can answer that tonight. I've got a, I I think that I I'm not, I'm not sure what language was used in the notice. So I can get back to you on on the language and I'm not sure it it applies exactly in this situation. I think it's it's notice that's used on am I right, Adam? Individual decisions?
Well, it it is our standard language we attach to notices with respect to public hearings. But I think you you may be right that it it's typically in the quasi judicial actions in which that language is most relevant rather than the legislative public hearing actions. But nonetheless, I think the point was that, you know, this is an opportunity, should you want to challenge in the future, to have an opportunity to put information into the record that would be part of that legal case in the future.
Let's go to Bob.
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is just confusing, but I'm just trying to clarify. If we don't pass this and to go back to an example that was used, and I own a house in Madera Gardens. Under the existing law, I could split the lot, build a second unit in the backyard and it would be within, it could be within four feet of the rear property line. And it could be twenty two to thirty feet high if we don't pass this, right?
Correct.
Within four feet of the rear property line.
Correct.
And I have a five thousand square foot lot in Madera Gardens. And it's all over the counter with no public discourse if we don't pass this. Okay. Thank you.
Eli. Thanks, Bob. Eli.
Thanks, Fred. Good discussion. I definitely appreciate the other council members' comments as well as the grants comments. I think, you know, I I'd like to bring folks back to Lila's question that she asked earlier, which to me really kind of made the situation clear because she asked, you know, she said, when we pass the original urgency ordinance, it was because the law wasn't clear and we were waiting for additional guidance to come from the state. We figured largely it would probably come through court cases being resolved that would help us kind of understand better what the law actually means. And she asked if that was, if anything changed or if that was still the situation. And the answer was, nothing has changed. That is still the situation. We're still waiting for clarity. So for that reason, I'm totally comfortable passing this thing tonight. I I was, you know, I was comfortable passing it back in January and the situation hasn't changed. So I think that speaks for itself. The one thing that I would be open to, and and I don't know how other council members feel about this, but I would be open to, you know, I appreciate that the that the height limit that we have matches the height limit for ADUs. I think that makes sense. I think that's really logical. If if ADUs can go, it sounded like it was ADUs can go up to a thousand square feet for two bedrooms by right and then potentially up to twelve hundred with a discretionary review, I would be open to just bumping up our thousand square foot cap for SB nine units to to that same twelve hundred. I actually had thought that AB sixty eight, the the ADU law did allow up to twelve hundred square feet by right for a two bedroom, but maybe I'm misremembering. But either way, I, you know, I think in the spirit of of further lining this up with our ADU laws, I'd support bumping that thousand square foot SB nine unit cap up to the twelve hundred. But other than that, I'm I'm totally comfortable with, you know, where this stands right now.
Any other, yeah, Lila, go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to echo Eli there. I would also be comfortable with that. I I think the, I think it was Corinne who spoke about, you know, attracting young families. And I think we should be mindful of that. And an extra two hundred square feet isn't gonna isn't gonna hurt anybody. So I would be open to that as well.
Okay. Hey, Adam or Martha, is there any, do you think any material effect by bumping it up from a thousand to twelve hundred? What that would look like? Or do you see any issues?
Larger, no, it's not. It's 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 not. It's hard to say. I'm sorry, but it's not. We can't really project exactly how that would look on a particular site at all. It's very much dependent on a site by site basis, how somebody would want to design that. It's, I mean, but it's a relatively small addition to the thousand square feet, if you want to look at it that way. I I don't know how I was really to describe it.
Okay, let's go to Charles and then Bob.
Yeah. So so once again, we're we're making decisions based on one common and one applicant in one district within the what I would say and also being of Madera Gardens is that my current house is twelve hundred and fifty square feet. The vast majority of them are twelve hundred and fifty square feet. They're single family homes. And I agree that they're great for young families. That's why I moved here. The question is, do we give them a a whole nother one in the backyard on, you know, like? And then also a third, maybe possibly give it without any kind of discretion just over the counter. And so my thing is, is I would probably make the findings for an individual in a much larger lot. But I need to understand the ramifications in all of our zoning and all of our lots to really like say that it's okay, because I, there are definitely smaller lots that split it. And you're talking about lot splits and then building two units of that size. So it's actually building four twelve hundred square foot units on my property, you you know? And that seems like, that's great if that's the community we want. But I'm telling you, that's not why I moved here. And that's not what I want to support in my neighborhood. So while I would entertain with Adam and Martha, is there's an ability to make a variance that's not a by, you know, a special grant of privilege, but an evaluation of a local neighborhood. And it makes sense to basically grant that over the counter. I would entertain something to that level. Right? But then it's, you know, it's not discretionary, but it it staff has to feel comfortable that, you know, they they're gonna, that nobody's gonna have a problem with it, right? Basically, for to administratively approve it. And if not, then they need to get it in front of the public. And that's that threshold of what that line is. And and I'm I'm not making the findings or feeling that I'm comfortable with four twelve hundred square foot units on some of the lots that would be able to be split. So that's how I feel right now. that's how I feel right now currently unless I'm misunderstanding anything. And then also I saw on the Q and A that Corinne um, mentioned that it's eight hundred square feet by right for an ADU. I think that there's a threshold for a one bedroom and a two bedroom. And I also think I missed, misunderstood what Eli said. I think Eli understands that the ADU currently allows twelve hundred square feet. Um, I misunderstood that, but it's really, I think that the ADU ordinance currently allows the thousand for a two bedroom and eight hundred for a one bedroom, which is the state. If, can we get clarification? Eli, did I hear that right? But because when you said it, I thought you were arguing that you understood that it was twelve hundred. Why would we be reducing it? But I don't know that that's actually the case.
And I'm No, so, so what Adam and Martha said is that it's, it's up to a thousand for two bedrooms in Cordera right now by right. And then you can, you know, there's a discretionary ability to go up another two hundred to twelve hundred. And, and what I said is that I had thought that AB sixty-eight, the state law allowed for up to twelve hundred by right. But given that that's not what we adopted, I'm going to guess that I'm misremembering the state law.
Thanks, Charles. Thanks Eli. Uh, Bob, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm in complete agreement with Charles on this. I mean, I think the numbers we're talking about and I, I sell real estate, so I deal with lots and square footage sizes all the time. To use that twelve hundred square foot example. Okay. So that's a duplex. That's suddenly a twenty-four hundred square foot duplex. If you have another twenty-four hundred square foot duplex on the same lot and it's a five thousand square foot lot, which is pretty common in Madera Gardens, even if it's a six thousand square foot lot, that's an eighty percent floor area ratio. Think about what, besides the fact that's twice what our town ordinance is for floor area ratio. Think about what the neighborhood starts to look like, what the area starts to look like. I think it changes the fabric of the neighborhood pretty substantially. Uh, and making it that large, I, I think, I, I completely agree with Charles. It's just, I can't make those kinds of findings either. It's just, uh, too big. If we can control it to a thousand, I think that's more, um, reasonable because we have a lot of small lots in this town. Um, where this, this could potentially happen. Thanks.
Thanks. It almost sounds like we would have high density in residential neighborhoods to a certain degree. Charles, you still have your hand raised? Do you have any other questions? Now, does anybody have any other comments or questions? So I think for me, we need to pass something tonight because I don't want to take a step backwards and I think it puts us in a more awkward position by not doing anything and just letting this expire. Um, I agree. I think twelve hundred at this point in time is a little bit too large, given, um, comments from both Bob and Charles, and I can see it on a larger lot, but not on a five or six thousand square foot lot. To me, it's just too much, um, density on those, uh, type of lots. Uh, one minute, and then, uh, and I think it's hard at this point in time to get into this ordinance and start changing it with respect to, uh, size of units. Uh, like, you know, compared to lot sizes, I just think it's too much to try to do tonight and I don't think we would be able to do it. Um, so with that, I can support, um, adopting the urgency ordinance has is with the provision that, um, staff comes back when you come back to us, that you look at the size requirements, comparison to lots. Um, and by then you should have more data, more analysis, and it would give us more information to, um, actually go up to that size limit or not. Charles, go ahead.
So, so I'm in agreeance with you, Fred. All, all I ask for Corinne, and I'm really appreciative that they've communicated what would, what would be in their best interest is that this is a year long, um, you know, ordinance from what I understand, right? Emergency ordinance. And do you have a timeline or expectation? What flags and when are we going to see this? You said it could come back earlier, right? So basically if it's restricting people that we feel should, it shouldn't be restricting and we need to modify it again. Are we willing to do that within that year, not push it out an entire year? And then the other thing is, is are we going to revisit this when the guidance comes, when it comes, like what the trajectories? Because, you know, I think that that's really important for people that have taken the time to be here tonight.
And, and I'm sorry, I'll add to that. I think it looks almost like there's two timelines. One timeline is, are we going to revisit this if AIPAD comes out with more guidance? And then part two is, can you move? And I, I know you have a lot on your plate, so I'm not expecting, um, miracles or for you guys to be working twenty-four seven. But is there a way that you can move that timeline ups instead of making it a year that you move it up to six to nine months? And again, I don't want to stretch staff to the point where you guys OD and burnout. I don't want you guys to get to that point at all. So I'd rather have you guys be upfront with us and say, yeah, we think we can and it's possibly doable, or we are looking at a year. So this way we're all on the same page. Thanks, uh, Adam, Martha? Or Todd?
Yeah. You know, I, I, I think certainly, um, it's, it's challenging to come back a number of different times, um, to do ordinances um, on a piecemeal basis. So we like to sort of lump all the changes we think we're going to do on an ordinance together in one sort of package. And take that, obviously there's workshops, there's planning commission and then bring it obviously to the, the town council for, um, review. Um, that we, we certainly see there's opportunity toward the end of the year to have sort of a more permanent, this permanent ordinance, um, uh, ready to, to review in that manner. Um, there however, you know, I, I, I think there uh, wouldn't rule out the opportunity on a very limited basis, especially if there, we are going to be discussing fire, um, that fire discussion that, um, Amy mentioned, and if there are amendments associated with that. Theoretically, we could tackle just a small piece along with that if we have to do so. And, and, you know, that's, that's a, that's a possibility, but, um, uh, you know, there are a lot of other pieces of, uh, uh, ordinances that we, we are obviously working on. Uh, one of the things you'll be seeing, and this is maybe more, uh, uh, relationship to the affordability part, but it's certainly part of the housing conversation is going to be an inclusionary zoning ordinance and update, um, that has to be done before July first, um, because of new state legislation there. Um, obviously we're still working on the housing element. So a lot of different pieces to the housing puzzle that are all important. Um, and, um, you know, I, some of you may remember we, we how much energy and effort it took to get the accessory dwelling unit ordinances adopted and we did that, I think at least two or three amendments. Um, which were lengthy processes each and every one of them. So, you know, but I, we certainly want to, um, once we get the guidance and, and get more information and feel, study some of these issues, get public comment, really come back with a a real comprehensive, um, uh, uh, analysis and the comprehensive, um, ordinance that we think really works for Cordera. A lot of the things that we've heard. So I, hopefully by the end of this year, um, it may push into the beginning of next year, but the goal is really to not extend it another year.
Okay, thanks. So if I hear what you're saying, if, uh, we pass this tonight, just say, you're not going to come back to us two months from now. And I agree with you. I don't think it should be done piecemeal. Um, I learned that with Park and Rec as far as CIP projects. I think it's similar to this. It's easier to have all the data, all the analysis at once, and it's a puzzle. You can fit all the pieces together instead of trying to do a piecemeal. So if I hear you correctly, you would could be come back to us hopefully in December, maybe January with more of a, of a complete, um, permanent ordinance. Instead of trying to do a piecemeal.
Yeah.
And Amy on the wildfire situation, if I heard you correctly before, it's two separate things. So you would come back to us like next week, talking about wildfire zones and stuff like that. And all of a sudden go, oh, by the way, we also have to amend this urgency ordinance. It sounds like the two are not tied together, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That's my mistake.
Okay. Is there any other comments or discussion from town council members? Okay, with that, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and adopt the urgency ordinance number one O one seven to extend it through March first, two thousand twenty-three with the provision, the comments that have been made tonight, both from the grants and both, I'll say from Adam and Martha as far as timeline. And then with respect to us getting all the information, so we can pass a more complete permanent ordinance all at one time. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks. Are, is there any other further discussion? Okay, that I'll go ahead and call for the vote, Rebecca.
Member Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mangan?
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
America Sisa?
Uh, yes. And, and I appreciate when we have these robust discussions, um, and including public comment. I just think it really helps staff, giving them direction. And I think it's just us also in what direction we need to move in sometimes. So I, I appreciate it. Uh, with that, we're going to go ahead and move to, uh, business item six A, which is discussion possible action by the mayor to take, uh, council member appointments regarding community development block grants and home countywide priority setting committee. Has a mouthful. Uh, Rebecca, can you give a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Sisa. Just, uh, switching gears and opening up that page.
Thank you.
So back in, uh, December after the council reorganized, we, we did council committee appointments. Um, at the time it wasn't, um, fully aware to everyone that, uh, one of our appointees, or one of our, um, alternate appointees would have a conflict attending on behalf of the primaries. In, in the primaries absence. And that was with the, uh, community development block grant and home countywide priority setting committee. Uh, this committee, um, is advisory to the board of supervisors. It meets um, several times a year, a couple of times in the spring, a couple of times in the fall. I think it meets possibly four or five times in total. Um, so not, not consistently, but when it does meet, um, it provides recommendations on funding requests to the county board of supervisors in conjunction with the Nevada city council, which makes recommendations for Nevada specific projects and the Santa Fe city council, which makes recommendations on Santa Fe specific projects. Our appointees and the other cities' appointees um, advise the board supervisors on the, the countywide projects as a whole. And, uh, perhaps our, our primary appointee, Lou Mangan, can provide additional background on the work of the committee. But our alternate appointee, Charles Lee, um, is our primary representative to the TAM board and, um, when he is called upon to fill in on behalf of the primaries absence, uh, he, he can't, um, attend because he is obligated to attend the TAM meetings.
So it sounds like we need, and I'm sorry, just to clarify, it sounds like we need an alter- uh, alternate um, for Charles because your meetings coincide with the TAM meetings. And then Lila, the question is, are you still good with being the primary?
Yeah, I'm happy to remain as primary for now.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other questions from town council members? Okay, let me go ahead and open it up to, uh, public. Is there anybody from the public we should speak on this, um, topic? I don't see any hands raised, any emails.
And we did not receive any emailed public comments on the item.
Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and close public comment. So I'm just going to do it this way if everybody's okay with. Lila, we'll still remain, keep you as the primary and I don't mind going on as the alternate, uh, replacing Charles. So if everybody's good with that, I don't think we need a motion, right, Amy? Because they're just appointments. Okay, so if we just get that noted in the records.
Okay, I will send a notification to, um, the staff at the county who run this committee.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it. Uh, and with that, we'll go ahead and go to council reports. Actually, we'll start off with the town managers report. Todd, you're up.
Mayor, members of the council, um, just a quick, uh, a couple of quick updates. Um, um, the first is, and most importantly, uh, the town hall project has officially been advertised and is out to bid. Um, and it's, it went out on March thirtieth and um, we plan on closing that and taking something to council on April fifth at our town council meeting for you to review. Um, we already are getting, uh, some really strong preliminary, uh, interest from contractors. And so we're, we're really excited about the timing of putting that out. So fingers crossed over the next few weeks with that. Um, also, um, staff is, is working and will continue, uh, to lean on, uh, the vice mayor, but we're really doing a push now. Uh, we've identified, you know, as a staff, um, where we want to start really attacking and trying to get grant monies, um, to provide infrastructure for EV charging stations. Um, the locations currently looking, we're looking at it, it's anywhere from two up to five or more, um, charging stations at each location would be San Clemente Park, Town Park on the Eastman parking lot, Town Park at the Pixley parking lot, the Cordera Corporation yard. Um, and looking at the corporation yard where we can support Hunt Plaza, you know, we have EV, uh, vehicles now. Um, we're going to coordinate with them and see if we can, you know, um, while we're there, have EV charging stations. And we, we, when we leave, it'll be one of the gifts we give, uh, to that area as well, uh, leaving that behind. So I'm excited about that. Park Madera Shopping Center, Mankey Park. Um, the North Mankey Park, um, lot owned by the county, um, also. And we're also, you know, as you know, the, the, the town hall project location, we have one EV charging station. We're adding a second one over the next, um, few months. Um, and, you know, when we do move back, we plan on having a, a whole row of EV charging stations as well. So I just wanted to, um, alert you of that. Uh, TAM has some great programs. The vice mayor has always been very supportive of us and, uh, helping us along. So we're going to lean on him, um, and really try to, um, have some, uh, projects ready where we can get in front of some of the other county jurisdictions because there's some funding available. So I'm excited about that. Uh, Bob Brown is under contract. I just, uh, with the help of Adam, thank you, uh, Adam. Um, we've entered a contract with them and he is jumping in with both feet. On the climate, uh, action and sustainability committee and work, all the work that we want to do. And we're, uh, trying to coordinate a meeting, um, with council member Beckman and myself and Bob Brown, uh, to really kick this off moving forward. The last one is, uh, staff had a really good meeting, um, with PG&E. Um, you know, I'm sorry, this process has been slow, but it's not for, um, not spending a lot of time and effort and energy, both from our consultant staff and PG&E's leadership team. I'm really trying to get, um, our report done is, is fast as possible, but as thorough as, as possible. Um, the survey that we recently completed, um, actually puts us in a really good position um, on, on our ask for PG&E. Um, again, our timeline is probably, uh, we're still probably about forty-five days away from having a draft copy. Uh, but I think what, what we'll see is it would just won't, it won't be staff and the consultant bringing something to council to, to hear and review. You're going to have leadership from PG&E as part of that conversation in front of council. Um, they're motivated, um, to really look at uh, some pilot program opportunities for, uh, Cordera. And so, uh, more to come with that. Um, it, it has been slow, but it, it's going to be really exciting, um, for Cordera. And again, the focus, um, primarily on some of the pilot programs potentially is just not only the higher fire risk areas of our town. So we're looking at the town as a whole from, uh, age, PCP power shut offs, red flag, you know, everything we're looking at. We're looking at the whole, the whole area, um, in its totality and opportunities immediately and really to develop a five, ten, fifteen, twenty year strategy to underground uh, our town. So, um, and so I'm excited about that. Um, and the last thing is we have a, uh, Marin managers, um, monthly meeting on, uh, Thursday, Rebecca and I will be on that call. And we're, we're talking about a lot of things, uh, within, within the county. One of them will be at the top of the list is when we're going to go back to public meetings. Um, so we are currently situated as a, as a staff to, to do that, um, in the month of April. If we want to do that, we could have hybrid meetings. But, you know, we want to really follow, we're going to pay a lot of attention on Thursday on that conversation to see what everybody else is doing. So we can share that with the council. And then we'll also pull the council on your comfort level of going back to public meetings. But we, we are positioned with the help of Rebecca. Thank you for all the good hard work, getting that room ready. But, uh, we're there. So we're going to just check with all of our cohorts on Thursday to make sure we're not missing anything. And, um, hopefully, you know, all the jurisdictions move kind of in unison as we go back, um, to public meetings. Um, and the last one is, um, there's been a lot of conversation over county, uh, city town fees and how we, how we operate. We, I gave you an update, uh, a few meetings ago on that, um, we're meeting with, uh, the Marin managers are meeting with the county, um, with the county as well as, um, a couple of the MCCMC council members to really kick off how we should move forward, uh, on, on possibly four to five educational meetings with, uh, that subcommittee that was just formed to talk about fees. Um, and, you know, we're, we have one before us now. It's the mobile showers are coming back to us. We just had, um, a review of the voucher program. You know, continuing to move that forward, you know, these are thirty to forty thousand dollar ask each of, of the town of Cordera. Um, one of the issues right now are we have three homeless, major homeless Um, one of the issues right now are, we have three homeless, major homeless encampments in Santa Fel, Nevada, and uh, Sausalito. And there's been a lot of conversations amongst the county and those three jurisdictions about um, shared costs. And um, you know, behind closed doors, and really the other cities and towns haven't been involved in that conversation. And what you're going to see come from it is a third ask, and it's going to be that 50%, that's the responsibility of those three jurisdictions, cities and towns, Santa Fel, Nevada, and Sausalito. There's going to be ask of the remaining cities and towns to help pay for that 50%. And so the point is, when you start to look at all these, I say, you know, death by a thousand paper cuts. I think they're all good programs, they're all really important, but it's how do we get to a decision-making matrix of how we, how we evaluate these things and move forward? You know, it's how this council expects me of how we present things. What's the background? What are we obligated to provide? What should we be doing and understanding the budget and who's responsible for what? Um, hopefully, this committee can help quickly um, set that, set that into motion. Um, and what really jumps out at me is the county and the, and the cities and towns really operate differently, right? We have different missions, different scopes of work, and it, it shows. And so um, I'll definitely um, lean on council member Beckman and the mayor, Mayor Cissé on really educating our cohorts as we move forward with that. Um, but you know, there's some important uh, projects coming forward uh, countywide um, that we really have to understand and weigh in on quickly. Um, and you know, for me, it's, it's, you're talking, when you look at all these numbers, it's one to two positions within this town. I mean, that's the cost of what we're putting out there and subsidizing, and the question is, should we be? Um, and how should we be doing it moving forward? So uh, more to come on that as well. Um, and just the last piece of news, I wanted to give you a quick update. Um, it's a, it's a plug for uh, our finance director, Daria, Daria uh, Carrillo. Um, she just did a mid-year adjustment with this council that you approved. Uh, one of them was to move additional monies, $900,000 to our retiree health OPEB account. Um, and, and with that, that deposit, you know, we had a $6.9 million unfunded liability when she did that. Um, and um, we were funded at about 52% when we had that conversation a few weeks ago, um, or about $4 million. We just got our projections um, for our, for our recent um, OPEB report, and what I can tell you is, we're actually going to be funded um, as of this June, 72%. And so our unfunded liability is now um, about $1.9 million. Um, and so again, it's still a big number, but um, we're 72% funded. If you compare that to agencies that have the retiree health benefit in the county of Marin, and we're probably um, we're, we're the top-rated funded agency uh, in the county. And so more work to be done, but thank you, council, for all your hard work uh, there. And there was another, uh, another good piece of news. You know, with a lot of the economic development that we've seen recently, it was really hard to um, to figure out what our budget is and revenue for sales tax revenue, the 1% sales tax. You know, it's always kind of flowed between 6.6 million. We've seen some of those years where it's gone up to 8.1. We went through COVID, we made it through, it, it kind of held the line there for us in the 7 million range. Coming out of it now with the new uh, electric car dealerships and, and a lot of that great economic development work that the planning commission and department has done over the last couple of years. We just got a kind of a, a three-year analysis moving forward. And so this fiscal year, we're looking at um, an additional $1.2 million in sales tax revenue uh, that was not shared in the mid-year adjustment that you approved. And so you're looking at a surplus right now, the way we're trending. Again, a lot going on in the world, and you know, the economy is very fickle, uh, but right now, that is the projection on the years going out. Um, the range now has moved from a 6.5 to 7 million range to 7.5 to 8.1 is how we should, the recommendation of how we should start budgeting our revenue. So my point is that the town is really um, we're really surging uh, moving forward and, and just seeing some really strong growth, and it's unprecedented really on the sales tax when you look up, up and down the state. Um, but again, HDL has spent a lot of time analyzing this. One of the things we wanted to know is just what are our strengths and weaknesses? Um, and, and what are, what are, you know, really focusing on our vulnerabilities. Um, and what, what has really been pointed out to us is just the major um, economic drivers in our sales tax are just strong. They're just really strong, and they're going to be strong for a while, and it actually helped us pivot from um, how we function over the last 10 to 20 years, moving forward into the future. And we thought that progression would take a decade to do. It actually happened in the last three years. It's really remarkable. And so we're going to, I'm really excited about it, and so I want to share, I'm going to have a presentation by HDL. I want them to come to the council, and I want them to share what they're seeing. Uh, so you know, when you make decisions in the future, you're not doing it blind, and you can do it with confidence. You know, moving forward. So anyway, some good, some good news there um, moving forward, and I'll stop with that.
Thanks, Todd. No bad news? All good?
None that I can share.
And, and just a quick note, I've been zooming from the, I want to say the community room at the new town hall. And I'm sitting on it, on the, the old Diaz, Diaz. Um, and I'm looking at like six microphones, two 65-inch TVs. So thanks Rebecca for getting this whole thing set up, because if we go back to in-person meetings, I think it's great that we're going to be allowing, allowing people to do hybrid and also Zoom if they don't feel comfortable being in person, or if they just don't want to come in, um, they still have that option. So with that, let's move to town council reports. Eli?
Thank you, uh, Fred. Thank you, Todd, for that great report, by the way. Um, attended a bunch of meetings over the last couple of weeks. We had two climate action committee meetings. This is, this is kind of like our old climate action committee that's technically on pause right now, but the group is still meeting like informally as, as residents, uh, and just doing really good work there. Um, attended MCCMC Economic Recovery Committee meeting, the full MCCMC meeting, the MCCMC Water Policy Subcommittee meeting, and the MCCMC Legislative Committee meeting. Um, nothing huge to report uh, out of any of those. And then just today, uh, this morning, we had a Chamber of Commerce Board meeting, and they are absolutely thrilled uh, with the uh, approval of the hotel redevelopment. So I think we can all pat ourselves on the back for that. That was a, a long time coming, and that's all I've got.
And see, Eli, let's go to Bob.
Uh, yeah, we had a homelessness committee meeting, which went a very long time because we were talking about the very issue that Todd talked about, which is funding and the shower programs ending. Um, I'm probably going to be coming back and asking for a three-month extension, but we're looking at the whole picture, and Todd went into far more detail. I don't need to go into anything else about it. We're looking at that very carefully. I also had an MWPA meeting, Marin Wildlife Protection Association. Um, big thing is, we are adding staff, um, vegetation management, people, wildfire mitigation specialists, because we got a big year coming up. We're going to be doing a lot of work. You're going to be hearing about a lot more. That's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Bob. Mela?
Thanks. Uh, I attended the MCE Marin Clean Energy Meeting, um, I guess almost a couple of weeks ago. Um, nothing big to report there. They're just continuing um, doing good work about uh, bringing green energy solutions to the Bay Area.
Thanks. Charles?
Uh, so I attended the uh, Transportation Authority of Marin um, meeting. Um, Stephanie Molton Pierce, who's the current uh, chair nominated me to become uh, the representative uh, on the all fuels ad hoc committee um, that helps make decisions on alternative energy uh, transportation funding. Um, also, there was a really good presentation. If you're interested, it's about, um, it was presented by Caltrans, and it's about their ongoing EIR and, and PEL processes, both um, very quick burn projects and longer-term uh, um, planning for uh, Highway 37 across all sections of it. Um, very informative, very good discussion. Um, and then also, we got an update on uh, the transportation funding at the federal level and uh, what our prospects are uh, of local community and, and a regional community to access those funds and what type of grants um, they expect to be available and in what buckets. Um, and then our transportation agencies that are outside of those two purviews and how it would be distributed to them. So if you're interested in those, I recommend looking at those. It's also available online. Um, I also, on a personal note, wanted to thank Todd and staff, even though I think it was Caltrans that ultimately has the responsibility, but there were some very dead trees along the highway um, and near the turnstiles that had been slowly dying the last couple of years, um, but I felt were a real true fire hazard at this point. Um, and they were removed recently, and it makes me sad that we lost some beautiful redwoods. As the, I always points out, they were never meant to be in the wetlands. But also, I'm glad that I still see in the middle of winter that we're having to do a pavement of uh, dying vegetation, so.
All right, thanks, Charles. Uh, for me, I, sorry, I also attend the MCCMC monthly meeting. I also attended the monthly CASA working group meeting. A couple of things on that front. Um, one is, is that Marin County is still progressing or, or Homework Bound is with the improvements at, at uh, our project Home Key site uh, next to Marin Joe's. Uh, potentially, they're looking to open or bring back residents in mid-April or so. They are planning on having an open house slash grand opening. Uh, on the open house part, they're looking at having that project open, I'll say from one to four um, or 11 to two plus or minus. Um, one day, we're trying to push to have them do that on a Saturday versus a weekday, so we can get more um, of the public in there viewing those units before residents move in. Homework Bound also has created their own website for that um, site. Um, which you can go to, it's on the internet. Uh, they are having a naming contest uh, which is open to the public. I think they're offering a $100 gift card to the winner. They're just trying to rebrand it and get more community involvement. That page also includes donations. Um, if you want to donate, um, donate to Target specifically for um, residents, and has all kinds of home goods and that kind of stuff. And a big thanks to the Cordean Madera Community Foundation. They made a sizable donation um, towards that project. Um, so I appreciate them doing that. And with that, oh, and then the last thing is, I had, uh, we had the second nurse forum last week, I believe. Um, we got pretty good turnout, but more importantly, there were, we had Ashley there from Park and Rec. We had a really good discussion, um, because again, it's an open forum. Todd's already smiling and laughing um, regarding the master plan. Um, again, we're looking for pros and cons, negatives, positives, everything, but it was just a really good discussion, and that was recorded. Coming up this month, we're going to have Adam coming, talking about um, the housing element, and we're throwing in SB9 also. So again, open forum. So again, it's working out pretty well. And with that, we're going to go ahead and move to the draft agenda for our March 15th meeting. If anybody wishes to make any additions or have any changes, please let either myself or Todd know. We can add to that or delete thereof. Um, and if, with that, if there's no further business to come before town council, I will adjourn the meeting, and we do not have an SD2 meeting tonight. So we're done for the night. So I appreciate everybody, um, everybody's hard work. Thanks.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Everyone, good night.